Welcome, everybody, to our City Commission meeting, our regular City Commission meeting of Thursday, May 5th. We'll call this meeting to order. Nikki is with us on Zoom, so I'll look to Jennifer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Please stand. Let us all take a moment to reflect together, each according to our own beliefs and intentions. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
All right, so we've got some really awesome presentations tonight. Our first presentation is the, because it's Teacher Appreciation Week and our Mayor's Top Apple School Awards, I will turn this presentation over to our school liaison, Commissioner Gao.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. It is indeed Teacher Appreciation Week, and it actually should be Teacher Appreciation Day every day. They are a wonderful group of selfless individuals that teach our children every day. So, Teacher Appreciation Week. Phyllis, would you please come up to receive the proclamation? Thank you very much. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, Phyllis. Whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is observed nationally during the first full week of May, and whereas teaching is a profession that requires the ability and desire to impart knowledge, creativity, patience, and persistence, and to adapt all learning environments for all students, and whereas teachers dedicate themselves to their students' academic success as well as their social and emotional well-being, and whereas, because of the changing needs of our young people in our schools, teachers must constantly, must be constantly learning and evolving their methods of instruction, and whereas, besides parents and family members, teachers are the single most influential individuals in the lives of our students and their future, and whereas the pandemic has challenged teachers to adapt to unprecedented circumstances and creatively provide online instruction and support, and whereas devoted teachers in Dunedin are working countless hours and putting forth extra effort to help students achieve, preparing them for further education, the workforce, and their civic duties. Now, I, therefore, Jeff Gao, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim Teacher Appreciation Week as May 1st through the 7th, and encourage parents, students, community partners, and citizens to show admiration and gratitude to the teachers in our schools.
Mayor, Commissioner, and those in the audience, thank you for allowing me to receive the Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation. We have a tradition in Dunedin. The proclamation goes to our newest principal, so I will be delivering this to Principal Tapia at Garrison Jones. She just completed almost her first year, so I will be delivering that to her. Also here today to share about Teacher Appreciation Week and all the wonderful things that our city does for our Dunedin schools and our commission. Yesterday, Commissioner Gao and I visited our Dunedin schools and dropped off a little token of appreciation from the commission to all our schools, and we had our kilts on, and we had so much fun delivering those gifts to our Dunedin schools. So, thank you for your support for our teachers. The best thing about tonight is our Mayor's Top Apple Awards, and we are in our 11th year of doing this. This was an initiative started by our current mayor, Julie Warbajowski, and it's a way to recognize our schools. Obviously, the city doesn't run our schools. We're a county-run district, but we are so fortunate in Dunedin, and everywhere we went yesterday, all of the principals, teachers, everyone was just so appreciative of how wonderful our city is with our schools. And a lot of other cities are very jealous of our commission liaison program that we have where we meet with our principals on a quarterly basis. So, I'm just the staff liaison who gets to do all this fun stuff. So, thank you. So, I wanted to recognize, we do have some specific awards that we give out, so I'm going to announce them tonight and call up our winners. So, our first award is for visionary leadership, and this is going to CDR Garrett Jones and Chief Christopher Johnson from Dunedin High School. They're unable to be here tonight as their chain of command ceremony for NJROTC is happening, actually, right now. So, congratulations to them. We delivered their awards yesterday, but I wanted to let you know about the great things happening at Dunedin High School in their NJROTC program. So, from July 2021 to date, cadets have totaled more than 3,000 combined hours of community and school support. And for any of our groups out there, our cadets are ready to help, so if you need some volunteer work, and we got to see their classroom, all the wonderful things that are happening, and a great program at Dunedin High School. So, our first award, our recipient is Achievement in the Arts, and I'd like to call up Jenny Cox from Academy Da Vinci. And Jenny has been there for six years, and this year has been, obviously, very unique in pandemic beforehand, but she had seven participants in the all-county chorus for middle school, three in the elementary. She's also the music director, and if you haven't had a chance, their shows are incredible. So, she had a very successful winter show and the upcoming Alice in Wonderland, so I'm going to recognize Jenny, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be with a city that appreciates the arts and appreciates our teachers very much, so thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have Excellence in Technology, and I'd like to invite Sarah Chiques and Lisa Waxman from Dunedin Highland Middle School. So, I was chatting with them before because having a middle schooler, I knew exactly what they were talking about with their iXls. So, Lisa and Sarah work with sixth graders who have an individual education plan, and through their small groups, their students in their classes utilize a program called iXL, which I was telling them how familiar I'm with. Thank you. And their students in their class were able to score an average of 100-point increase between the fall and winter iXL snapshots. This means that their students gained a full year of learning in one semester. So, very impressive work. So, thank you to Sarah and Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Our next award is the Health and Wellness Initiative, and I'd like to invite Janessa Bacon from Dunedin Elementary. So, teaching and learning are hard tasks, anytime, and during a pandemic, even harder. Janessa recognized this and did something to support the students and the staff at Dunedin Elementary, becoming certified to teach social-emotional wellness workshops and yoga to children and adults, and she has a mindful movement program that she's been doing. And I read this, and I might be stopping at your school every Thursday now. They offer yoga to the staff and focus on wellness and mindfulness.
Jennifer, good idea.
Yeah. We're stopping over at Dunedin.
We're all stopping over.
Yeah, we're coming.
So, congratulations to Janessa. Thank you.
And also, if I may say, she is a member of the family. Her husband Trevor Bacon works in our Public Services Division.
Oh, nice. Very cool.
Very good.
So, that's why Trevor is always in the center.
Yeah, Trevor, yeah. Supported by.
And finally, we have our Golden Apple, which is our Teacher of the Year Award, and I wanted to read a little bit before calling our Teacher of the Year up because I thought the write-up was amazing, and this is the kind of teacher that you dream about your child having. So, imagine walking into a classroom, and the lights are all off and music is playing. The room is only lit by flashlights that the students are using on their safari. Each student is wearing a safari hat and has books around them as they discover new animals and terrain. About a week later, you walk into the same classroom, and students have lab coats on, and they're in small groups, and you ask one of them, what are they doing? And the child looks at you and says, "I am a scientist." These two scenarios are typical in Meg Truluck's first-grade classroom at Dunedin Elementary. All of the teachers, the principal, vice principal, assistant principal, all said that the students never know what they will experience when they walk through the door. And I thought was amazing, she had one student that wanted to show her that he could do his best, and he won both the winter and spring challenge for the district. She always pushes her students. She also applied for and received a grant called CTIP, and she received 12 touch computers that she has incorporated into her students' daily work. And the nominator had said that she recently had one parent contact her and said, "My child cannot wait to go to school every day. I told them we were going to a theme park, and she would miss a day of school, and my child said, 'No way. I am not going to miss what's happening in my classroom.'" So, I'd like to welcome Meg Truluck from Dunedin Elementary as.
Now, you have to say something.
They did not say we had to talk, but I love to talk. Anyways, just thank you. I'm just blessed. This is my second career. This is not what I went to college for, but I wake up every day and say, "I can't wait to get to school," so thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Thanks so much. And I want to thank all of you for your support of our Dunedin schools, and I want to thank Commissioner Gao. He jumped in on his first year as the commission liaison, and we've had a lot of fun. Looking forward to working with our schools in the future and wishing them a great end of the school year and an even better summer. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to add something, if I may.
Sure.
You mentioned the schools and the Navy Junior ROTC, Junior Officers Training Corps, and how we could ask if they needed any help, if we needed any help. Well, this last Saturday, we had our 41st meeting with the veterans to fly to Washington, DC, and we weren't sure because it's been two years of how many folks that we would really have there. The whole sidewalk from the beginning of the building all the way down to where they met the World War II veterans was occupied by our Dunedin Junior ROTC. And in conjunction with that, of course, we had two of our organizations there, the Post 275, the American Legion, and we had 22550 of the veterans organization here. So, they were both here. So, we had such a collection from the junior all the way up to World War II and back to folks that were involved. And Commander Jones was there with his group, just fantastic. And I would have liked to have been, because I go to that evening, which is tonight at the school, but, and in my kilt, but I'm here at the commission meeting where I'm supposed to be, right, City Manager?
Yes.
But I just wanted to applaud them for that. Just, they are so successful this year. They're large. I think they have 113 members, and they're leaders in the Junior ROTC. So, fantastic. We're blessed.
That's great.
A little round of applause for those guys.
And Commissioner Gao, I just wanted to tell you, you know, we built the Mayor's Apple Awards off of St. Pete's Program. They're obviously a much larger city and do a lot more, but I would encourage you to take a look at their program to see how we might be able to grow it a little bit. They get a lot of businesses to donate, so I'll put that on you.
Thanks.
Just saying.
I would accept it.
There you go. Thank you, guys. And you don't have to sit around for the rest of the meeting. You can go down to Cinco de Mayo.
It is Cinco de Mayo.
You can stay if you want, but you won't hurt our feelings if you get up and go. You're welcome. And thank you again for everything you guys have done for our kids. Okay, I will, the next item under Presentations is our Municipal Clerks Week, and I'm going to give that to Vice Mayor Kynes.
Okay. So, Rebecca, what do you, I just pass it down? This is the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through May 7th, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, that's a real mouthful, is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all, at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Kynes, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, Julie Warbajowski, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend our appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Rebecca Schlichter, and to all professional municipal clerks for the very vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
We should have made you go down there and stand.
Don't you want to say a few words?
Thank you. I mean, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, truly appreciate that. But real quick, I just would be remiss if I don't mention the staff that supports all of us, and I mean Janice, Catherine, Joyce, who does a lot of the minutes that you see that are so quickly turned around. She's fabulous. David and Bill, who keep the mail running throughout the city. I truly appreciate each of them and each of you for supporting me, and hopefully we are, just keep making you proud.
Thank you. And you do. You do every day.
Every day. Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Okay, now it's time for citizen input. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on any item that is not already on the agenda, please feel free to do so. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Staff. Good evening. My name's Alan McHalen. For the record, I live at 1201 Falcon Drive in Dunedin. With me, I've got John Pennington, and I have Paul McClish, and we're here to talk about the Ukrainian benefit that we had at the weekend. I'm here to announce the results to you and to the citizens of Dunedin because of their support. The event itself lasted three hours but was cut short by lightning at 5:00. Before that, we had an amazing day. We were a very small group of hard-working board of board members, but we had some nice volunteers at the weekend. But we couldn't have pulled off anything without the amazing help of the city staff. We put this event together in four weeks, so I would love to recognize and to thank the City Manager, Director Vinskezy, Jory Peterson, both of whom are also here tonight, and the facility staff who made everything possible because they were absolutely amazing on the day and leading up to it. We also were lucky to get the help of the House of Beer and Sterling Wine, as well as Dunedin Doggy Rescue and the Boy Scouts of Troop 100, so fantastic job and a fantastic coming together. And lastly, a huge shout-out goes to the musicians. Paul is the leader of the band North of Vergile, who unfortunately didn't get the opportunity to play on Saturday because of the weather. Lightning beat them. But Paul did put a show together for us on Friday night, and as a result of that, he donated $600 to the fund. So, the numbers, when Paul and I met at the beginning, because the idea came from an email from Paul that happened to coincide with the event.
I was just kidding.
Yeah, I know. You said that, but that's not what happens when I get an idea thrown into my head. So, Paul's idea was to just do something in our hall and raise some money, and we set a goal originally of about $5,000. But Dunedin Rescue themselves, they had a raffle on Saturday, and they gave us $1,200 from that. The Scottish-American Society ourselves, we raised some money, and we've donated $1,500, and the band, as I said, gave us $600. So, all in all, at the end of the day on Saturday, we raised $14,710. Just for the record, $14,710. So, we're very proud of what we were able to achieve, and once again, I have to thank the City Manager and your staff, who are amazing. We also like to thank the citizens of Dunedin for their support because they did come out and, literally, in their hundreds, and they were, I hate to use the phrase because it's kind of crude, but they were throwing money at us on Saturday. They were, it was a $10 to get in. They were throwing a $20 on the table and just saying, "Keep the change." So, the community really did come together for that event on Saturday. We're currently looking, as an organization, at where that money will go. We are concerned that the money goes directly to Ukraine. For example, we announced it was going to the American Red Cross, but American Red Cross take the money, but there's no guarantee where it gets to go. Their donation button is a general button. It doesn't say specifically. So, we want the money to go to the causes that we, that will benefit most from it, let's just say. So, we will announce that to the public as soon as we make a decision. We promise to get that done within our own board by the end of next week. And once again, very proud and thank everyone for the effort that went into it on Saturday.
So, we'll do it again next week.
No, you're not. That's one thing I can guarantee, you know. I've got the day off.
Well, thank you so much for your efforts, too, because it, you know, wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for you guys. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Well done. It's a lot of money, especially when it got cut short like that. Okay, anyone else wish to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to action items. We have the first reading of Ordinance 2203, the rezoning of 935 Douglas Avenue from downtown Commercial to downtown Core. Nikki, would you please read that ordinance by title only?
Absolutely, Mayor. Ordinance 2203, an ordinance of the city of Dunedin, Florida, rezoning certain real property located at 935 Douglas Avenue, parcel number 272815-51588 0002002, with designated meets and bounds and totaling approximately 0.15 acres, from the antiquated downtown Commercial, DCOM zoning designation, to downtown Core, DC, and providing for an effective date. And this has been a reading of Ordinance 2203 on first reading. And this has been a reading of ordinance 2203 on first reading by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Okay, Vice Mayor Kynes and Commissioner Gow, thank you. Okay. George?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, George Kenny and Molly Cord, on behalf of the Planning Department. I want to, I'm actually going to ask Molly to make the presentation to you tonight. Molly stepped up in a time of need and actually said that she wanted to work on this project as part of that learning curve that she's taking. She's relatively new to the city, as you know. And of course, we were working feverishly on the overlay project, so we were like, yes, yes, please help us out. So Molly did all the staffing on this, did all the background work. She presented it to the LPA, and I am going to turn it over to her. And of course, we're both here to answer any questions when she's done.
Thank you. Molly Cord, on behalf of Community Development. Tonight, the applicant is requesting city commission approval to rezone the subject property at 935 Douglas Avenue from Downtown Commercial, otherwise known as DCOM, to Downtown Core, DC. So the subject property is located at the southwest corner of Highland Court and just north of Grant Street, just to give you an idea on the aerial map. But to give you some background information on the property, the parcel is located within the Downtown Commercial zoning district and has an underlying land use of activity center. The parcel is .15 of an acre or 6,534 square feet. The adjacent zoning districts are consistently Downtown Core with a variety of uses. You have a brewery to the north, warehouse retail to the south, residential to the east, and multifamily to the west. The building was originally constructed in 1997 and was historically used as an auto repair shop, formerly known as Gary and Mike's Auto Clinic, until the business was sold to W&amp;M Partners 100 LLC in August of 2021. And we do have the applicants here, Michael and Candy Bryant. The applicant ultimately would like to renovate the existing building in order to expand the existing brewery operations associated with the Dunedin Brewery. However, the DCOM zoning district no longer exists in the city's Land Development Code, and any property with the DCOM zoning designation will be deemed legally nonconforming. As determined by the city, in the event that the property attempts to make any type of improvements by permitting or redevelopment, the property would need to be rezoned to a corresponding zoning designation in order to make the property compliant. Following a final decision on the rezoning application, the applicant will be required to submit for the necessary permits for the proposed brewery expansion. Additionally, the applicant will need to apply for a conditional use permit if the outdoor dining area exceeds 500 square feet to further demonstrate compliance with the Land Development Code in addition to meeting all concurrency requirements for development. So just to give you some history of the Downtown Commercial Zoning District, this is from 1990. Historically, the Downtown Commercial Zoning District was mostly comprised of strictly commercial and service-related establishments with a broader scope in commercial uses. The intention of the zoning district was to provide large-scale, relatively intensive commercial and business establishments, included those that may be considered automobile-oriented. Residential uses were deemed inappropriate in this zoning district. The zoning district was intended to implement Downtown Dunedin Directions for the future, an element of the city's 1990 comprehensive plan to revitalize and identify blighted areas of the downtown. I actually kind of copied and pasted some of the information related to the Downtown Commercial. You can see some of the dimensional standards if you can read it. If not, I also have that handy. I also attached a copy of the permissible uses of the Downtown Commercial Zoning District that can be found within Exhibit J of your staffing. Additionally, you can see a statistic from 2009 giving you some insight of the parcel population that had the Downtown Commercial Zoning District, where it was approximately 1.4% of the downtown. At the time, the zoning district had the following development standards. They had to meet a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet, lot depth of 120 feet, lot width of 50 feet, and the front setbacks were 25 feet, seven and a half for the sides, and 15 feet for the rear. So in late 2004, the City of Dunedin commissioned consultant group HDR to conduct a visioning workshop for elected officials and senior city staff. The visioning workshop determined the Downtown CRA to be one of the six areas of primary concern for future development. The visioning report recommended combining the existing four zoning districts within the Downtown CRA, which would be DI, Downtown Industrial, DC, Downtown Core, DR, Downtown Residential, and DCOM, Downtown Commercial, into one single zoning district. The purpose of a single zoning district was the consolidation of a form-based code for larger portions of the Downtown Core. The next step was for HDR to hold public meetings to build on these initial efforts by taking the visioning process to the community at large, which resulted in two recommendations for the Downtown CRA. Among the conclusions in the 2005 visioning report, one was to review the height limits of buildings in the downtown, and the second was to create a more unified design guidelines through zoning and land use changes to channel new and future redevelopment to better match the vision put forth by the community. To that end, most of the properties located within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District elected to rezone to Downtown Core. Following the efforts of the visioning exercise in 2012, community development staff invited all of the property owners within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District to a neighborhood meeting to discuss the possibility of rezoning these parcels to Downtown Core. The intention of the DC zoning district was to create the opportunity to help revitalize the downtown economically, visually, and functionally to provide an aesthetically pleasing and efficient multi-use center. Downtown Core zoning is comprised of mixed land uses for residential, commercial, and service purposes. It also encourages residential uses to be proximate to the commercial and activity center. It provides maximum use and return for the investment by permitting mixed land uses on a parcel. The permitted uses within the DC Downtown Core zoning district are encouraged to be a compatible blend that helps to minimize the impact upon the infrastructure and betters the quality of the area for public welfare. Once again, the permissible uses of both the Downtown Commercial Zoning District and Downtown Core Zoning District can be found within Exhibit J of your staffing. This is actually the map of the city-initiated rezoning effort. During that time, we had the following rezoning requests from DCOM to DC. We had 911 Douglas Avenue, 937 Douglas Avenue, 957 Douglas Avenue, 967 Douglas Avenue, 971 Douglas Avenue, 991 Douglas Avenue, and a portion of property located at 413 Skinner Boulevard. For the record, these rezoning requests were under application number ZO-13-52.00, ordinance 13-09. 941 Douglas and 985 Douglas remain as DCOM today, as well as 935. To recap what was previously mentioned, the subject property is currently located within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District. The DCOM zoning district no longer exists in the city's Land Development Code, and any property with the DCOM zoning designation will be deemed legally nonconforming. As I stated, in the event that the property intends to make any improvements or redevelop, the property would need to be rezoned to a similar zoning district. Thus, the applicant is seeking to rezone the property to Downtown Core, which does permit a microbrewery by right. If the rezoning request is approved, the proposed use would be legally conforming within the Downtown Core Zoning District. Additionally, there would be no changes to the land use category designation of activity center as a craft microbrewery is consistent with the activity center land use category and the county-wide plan rules. Ultimately, the proposed rezoning would facilitate the recycling of an existing uninhabited building in order to expand the brewing operations of the Dunedin Brewery. If the rezoning request is approved, the proposed use would be considered legally conforming, and therefore, staff finds the application for rezoning consistent with the applicable review criteria. And therefore, the staff recommendation is to prove applications ZO-22-02 and ordinance 22-03, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions for Molly or George?
I was just curious, I think, are they all now DC? Or did you say there's still a couple of parcels that are DCOM?
Yeah, so ultimately, we have two parcels that have the Downtown Industrial zoning district, just to kind of break it down. There are two parcels with Downtown Commercial as their zoning district, so.
So there's a couple.
Yeah.
Well, they'll have to go through the same process because it's antiquated. Is that correct?
If they're within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District, they would need to do that if they were trying to make any type of redevelopment efforts, anything along those lines through permitting. So just because it doesn't exist in the city's Land Development Code.
I get it.
Yep.
So we still have some, but in order to do, actually do something with maybe an older property for a reuse, then you would go through the same process?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Jeff?
Let's just carry, what are the other commercial ones that would be left? The actual.
Give us the name of them.
Yeah, the actual name, not the address. I was going to say the dance studio has to be one.
It should be the warehouse, I think, one of the, what was it? It's a part of, there was a combination that we looked at, a parcel that was part of Woodright, I think it was.
The second lot in from Skinner, that one would still be one, and then there's one.
That's the animal hospital.
One shows the other one.
That's the animal hospital.
Well, it just became an animal.
It used to be a print shop.
Right there, so there's the second.
How was it able to become an animal hospital without going through?
Because they didn't have to get a permit? They just went in and removed, they didn't do anything that required a permit?
So it wasn't substantial. It was, they sort of used, what was it?
And who's messing with animals? Come on. Okay, that was my only question. Very thorough, very good.
Yeah. Good job, Molly.
No, thank you. I considered this administrative, and I did spend enough time with the city manager about the other properties, found out why and how, and I understand it, so great job to finish this up.
Yes.
I have nothing further as far as the question goes.
So I thought it was pretty interesting when you look at what could be there before versus what can be there now. A restaurant could be there before, it can be there now.
Yes.
A bar, tavern, and nightclub could be there before and can be there now. So there's no difference. So there's no reason not to.
Right.
Because, I mean, we did get a complaint letter.
Yes.
Right? And so this change doesn't address what her concerns are.
It was still.
It would still be allowed.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. All right. But just to say, I think that got clarified anyway with the individual, right? Because it wasn't permitted. It did, but she was concerned because another event happened and it, I don't know. I don't remember exactly what it said, but I think I forwarded it to you.
Yeah, and I think my.
Yeah, no, I know. But anyway, it doesn't matter because the fact of the matter is it could have happened under this current zoning. So by changing it, it doesn't make it any more or less likely, which is the point. And so I'm assuming that you all responded to her. We couldn't respond because it's quasi-judicial. So we couldn't speak with her outside of the public hearing process.
Okay.
So I hope somebody did respond to her. I'm looking at you, George.
I think somebody will if somebody didn't.
Thank you, because I mean, you have to understand, in that situation, we're not allowed to communicate about it.
Sure, sure.
And, you know, I just.
Yeah.
We will be sure that we can.
Yeah, we will convey that back.
Okay, thank you. All right, would the applicant like to come forward and say anything? Mike's never going to say no to speaking. Are you kidding? I was going to say, are you going to set a time limit or not? No.
Three minutes.
We're not going to give the applicant a time limit. Kidding, you know, kidding.
We just, I mean, it's been a long time since I've been up here. When we first brought the brewery here, you know, it was like, we were on Spalding Road, we had to get approval to, anything that went on over that little park had to get approved for whatever you were doing. So things have changed quite a bit. So then we moved to downtown and helped make some changes here. And then when everybody else was, a few people were scared. They were scared of the city because they wanted to go DCOM, or take DCOM and go to DC. What's, that's, wait, let's see, go, you know. And a few people are still the holdouts, like you're talking about. They were scared of the city. It was like, well, what's going to happen, you know? So, but we did that with Dunedin Brewery. So as soon as we got this, we're like, well, yeah, this, we got to do that, because that helps the overall picture. The more people doing it, the better. So do y'all have any questions? We're going to do the same thing we've been doing for 20, 23 years.
Wow.
You know? And we just haven't had any problems so far. I mean, if we have a problem, we just address it and solve it, you know?
So the intention, you know, in reference to the lady that sent us a letter with a bunch of pictures.
I think she got confused a little bit because she, I think she's new to the neighborhood. Maybe she's having, something else is going on that she thinks could be us, but we're not, we don't have music outside unless it's, all those, we've been doing 10 events a year.
Unless it's one of the festivals.
Yeah, it was a planned permitted annual event we did, and it just happened to be.
Gotcha.
And they had a tent. Well, we rent a tent to protect people during the summer. If it gets too hot during the COVID, you know, you couldn't have anybody inside. You know, we just do everything within the ordinances and within the law. And that's just what you do. If somebody's worried about somebody having sound ordinance violations, well, we haven't had any, but, you know, we have a sound engineer we employ that takes care of that. I don't know, you know, we're doing what we're doing. Y'all seen what we've been doing.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
Y'all want us to do something different, like, you know?
No.
Have a circus once a year?
Only if you have elephants.
Is Vince still here?
We have to have elephants.
Oh, my God.
Please don't give me.
No elephants, no. The memory of an elephant. Thank you.
Michael will do it.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item? Seeing a hearing now, we'll come back to the commission. Maker of the motion was Vice Mayor Kynes. Any final comments?
No final comments.
Commissioner Gow?
No final comment.
Oh, heck, yes, I'm going to make a final comment, because I'm going to say, you know, Michael and Candy have been, you know, they're just part of the backbone of downtown. And, you know, and I remember when they started and, you know, doing it out of the Spalding Garage. And, you know, you're just good team players that care about our downtown. And, you know, I appreciate you very much.
Commissioner, anything?
That was great. Thank you.
I echo. I'm not worried about any kind of outdoor things, so. Go yonder and expand the building. Make it better.
After second reading?
After second, sorry. After second reading. I'll bring my Centennial Ale bottle for the second reading. In my office. Four or five of those in my. In my office.
I think, I think those are, they probably dehydrated.
Well, Michael told me it might not be great if I opened it and tried to drink it, but, you know. Still, it's 20 years, right?
Twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Did you say twenty-three?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
Since you said that.
Come to the microphone.
This is kind of, it's funny you said that. So when I had the, I got the approval for the brewery over on Spalding Road. You know, as soon as it happened, they voted on it, said, okay. And they said, the first thing that was asked of me was, when are the taps going to be open? You know, it's like, when are we going to be able to drink the beer, you know? So it's like, oh, man.
Exactly, of course, yeah.
Well, we love it.
Yeah, it's good, it's good stuff.
All right, roll call vote, please. Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes?
Aye.
Mayor Bijowski?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. A nice job, Molly.
Yes, great job. We will have a second reading on May 19th. So thank you.
You guys can go. You don't have to stick around. Oh, Cinco, yeah, go to Cinco de Mayo.
This is so much more fun than Cinco de Mayo.
I know. You know, we should have figured that out. I was so worried about, you know, St. Patty's Day, that I ignored Cinco de Mayo about moving meetings around.
Don't say that.
I know, it wasn't on purpose. Okay, give me your, you know, let's close the meeting then. Okay. Can I just say, though, for Molly, I would just say that it's, I think it's really important for the public to give that back, that background, you know, to understand, like, how this moves through and why.
through, and why, you know, in your words, it's kind of administrative, because it's part of the vision, it's part of what we want, and actually, it was a good thing, them requesting it to change, so, I appreciate it, because I think, actually, more than us, it helps the public.
Mm-hmm, I understand, yeah, for sure.
She's thorough.
Okay, now we have a city-initiated land use plan amendment, it's the rezoning of 1900 San Mateo Drive, C, D, and E, which are the Hammock Park additions, so we have the first reading of ordinance 2204, which is the land use amendment, from public and semi-public to recreation open space. Nikki, would you please read that ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance 22-04, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, amending the City of Dunedin future land use plan as adopted by ordinance 2001, 20-01, on certain real property located along San Mateo Drive, parcel numbers 23281500003300400, 23281500003300200, and 23281500003300300, with designated meets and bounds, totaling approximately 8.97 acres, to assign a recreation open space, ROS, land use designation, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of ordinance 2204 by title only, and Mayor, if Joey's gonna do one presentation today, Joey, if you could just quickly raise your hand, I'll go ahead and swear you in. I assume you're gonna do one presentation for both ordinances? Yes. Okay, and I can see Joey on the screen, so, Joey, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2204 land use designation?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Gao and Commissioner Franny, thank you, okay, Joe, go right ahead, you're on.
Good evening, Joseph De Pasco, on behalf of the Community Development Department, I do want to go, give you a little bit of background here, it should be under an hour, if that's okay?
Okay, stop it.
You've got three minutes, get the clock going.
So, yeah, so, it'll be a combined, obviously, presentation on both the ordinances for consideration this evening. A little background of the application, I think everybody knows this city-initiated application for these three parcels, we are looking to, on behalf of the city, looking to change both the land use and the zoning of both, of all three parcels. You have the two ordinances this evening, 2204, which is the land use plan amendment, and 2205, which is the zoning designation change. What we have here on the screen is a large aerial to the left, you can see, I think everybody knows that this is a.
Not seeing it.
Sorry, you're not seeing this?
No.
Just Nikki.
Just Nikki.
Just Nikki.
There we go.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry, Nikki.
Nothing personal.
So, the aerial on the left is the, is just an overall of the area we're talking about, and I think everybody knows this is the southern portion of Hammock Park, it is about 8.97 acres in total, but if you look to the aerial on the right, then you'll see how that 8.97 acres breaks out, so you have a large parcel of just over eight acres, and then you have a slender parcel separated by another slender parcel, so you have three parcels in total, and I'll talk a little bit about how that came to be in the background, how the city acquired these properties, and why they're configured the way they are, these are unsubdivided lands, but they're configured into three separate parcels, and we're talking about all three. So, the background is pretty straightforward, the city purchased, as most people know, two of these parcels in 2016 from the diocese of St. Petersburg, as a result of trying to expand the park, and that purchase was available, about eight points, eight, 8.7 acres in total. The city had already purchased the .27 acres in 2010, and it actually coincides with a drainage feature that runs the length of that parcel, and so, that's, I think, that piece was carved out in 2010, and so, the applications you're seeing here this evening are for all three parcels, we want to obviously create a continuity across the entire Hammock Park, having the same land use and zoning, and so that's the background, it's first parcel purchased, and then the two parcels in 2016, and then, of course, naturally, we, here in the city, we always have the same land use and zoning across parklands, which is what we're proposing today, the resident, excuse me, the recreation open space land use with the MPL zoning. So that, that's how we arrived at needing all three parcels here today. Again, just real quickly, you've got three parcels, they actually are labeled C, D, and E, they combine 8.97 acres, they all do share the existing public, semi-public land use at the moment, and we're proposing to change that to recreation open space for all three The zoning district, this property is actually, unlike the balance of the park, is R60, or residential, single family, and, of course, we're gonna take all three parcels, and the proposal is to do the MPL across all three parcels, which is consistent with the park to the north. This application in both ordinances were presented to the local planning agency on April 13th of this year, and the LPA did recommend unanimously to approve both ordinances to the city commission. I know you're familiar with the next step, so if first reading is approved this evening, we will transmit this to the, to forward Pinellas, so then it can go through the formal hearing process at the county, which would culminate with the countywide planning authority presumably approving the land use amendment, and then we would bring both ordinances back to the city commission for second and final reading, and we anticipate that to happen in the fall, given the timing of those meetings, as you, as you know, it does go through three meetings to get, before it's returned back to us, so to speak. So with that, staff's recommendation is to approve both ordinances, ordinance 22-04, to change the land use plan category of all three parcels, from public, semi-public, to recreation, open space, and then, of course, the next ordinance is for the rezoning, 2205, from R60 to MPL, and with that, I certainly answer any questions you may have. I think Laney, excuse me, I think Laney from Parks and Recreation is here as well, on behalf of, obviously, the department.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Um.
Questions?
I know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
You don't have to have one.
It takes me a while to think.
You don't have to have a question.
No, I don't have a question.
I have, I have one question. Joey, the, certainly, you know that the property to the north of what we're talking about is Hammock Park, for the, for what we're discussing tonight, those slivers on the east side, they stop at the whole, that northern boundary, I'm assuming that those slivers are already considered part of Hammock Park as you head north?
Yeah, I think, I think the, from what I understand, this, all three of these parcels, I think most people already thought they were part of Hammock Park before they even acquired.
Right.
And so, yes, they definitely are part of the park. Yeah, as I mentioned, the sliver down the middle, that .27 acres, was acquired in 2010, and it follows a drainage feature, and I think that's why the city acquired it, is to continue, just to have that drainage feature in the city, to be able to maintain it.
So it will make the entire park, I guess, everything is contiguous now, and everything is all.
That's correct, it would be about nine, I wanna say it's about 95 or 94 acres in total, and it'll all have a consistent land use and zoning across the entire park.
Right, thank you, that was it.
Any questions?
I have no questions, unless I have to have a question.
You want me to have a, so this is, this really is administrative?
It's, I would say, it's a, it's a housekeeping item.
Thank you.
I think if you've read in the staffing, we, there was, there was some grant monies that were awarded to the city, and as a condition of those grant monies, we needed to change the land use to be consistent with parklands, and this does that, in addition to the fact that we simply zone property that is parkland, that this land use and zoning is consistent, so it's really a housekeeping and a requirement of the state.
Thank you for doing that, therefore, I have no further questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward and speak to the land use portion of this request, please feel free to do so. Seeing a hearing, then we'll come back to the commission, any final comments? Commissioner Gao?
Yeah, you know, I almost brought my save Hammock yard sign.
Oh.
Just, I walked on memory lane, but I thought that I put you guys in therapy. It was not a good time for you guys at all, but no, this is just putting the bow on the package, so this is wonderful, thank you.
Well, I'll just clarify, I wasn't up here, so it wasn't a bad time for me, but I was running for election for the first time, and I still, and that's when I met Jeff Gao, because he was at the July 3rd event at the Causeway, getting names on petitions to add this to Hammock Park, and I knew right then, we were gonna, you know, we were gonna have a lot in common, so, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm very supportive, it's a great thing, green space is a wonderful thing.
Any final comments? Commissioner?
Oh, wait a minute, I did have a final comment.
Sorry, I skipped right over you.
You did.
I'm sorry.
Did you think I was still thinking?
No. No.
No, what I wanted to say is, with this designation, when it goes through all the, you know, the county and comes back to us, this also means with this designation, that it will never be able to be sold without going to.
Without a referendum.
And that is the heart of the matter.
Yep.
Correct.
Correct.
And if you value your life, you wouldn't suggest it gets sold either.
Well, I mean, you know. Well, and frankly, we should have done this at least two, three to four years ago, it's just another one of those things.
Well, actually, Mayor, our comprehensive plan was not in compliance, and we could not move a land use plan amendment through, so this is, as you know, we adopted it.
Oh, gotcha.
Right, so, we finished our housekeeping.
You just done it today, aren't you?
Lots of caffeine.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Did I miss the motion?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Gao and Commissioner Franny.
For 2204?
Yes, we still have to do 2205.
So, so Gao, and I'm sorry.
Commissioner Gao and Commissioner Franny.
Okay. Let's see. Vice Mayor Kynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Then we have ordinance 2205, which is the zoning designation for the same property, we've received the presentation from Joey, Nikki, would you please read that by title only?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance 2205, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, zoning certain real property located along San Mateo Drive, parcel numbers 2328150003300400, 23281500003300200, and 23281500003300300, with designated meets and bounds, and totaling approximately 8.97 acres, to municipal public lands, MPL, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of ordinance 2205 on first reading by title only.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Still moved?
Second. Okay, Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Kynes, thank you, we've already received a presentation, any questions on the zoning piece of it? No? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward and speak to the zoning portion of this hearing? Seeing a hearing, then we'll come back to the commission, any final comments? Commissioner Franny?
No, again, I mean, you know, it's a housekeeping issue, but it brings back good memories of saving more green space.
Commissioner Kynes, any final?
No, I mean, you could never have enough, really, I mean, and now with the GDP and our Hammock, and how many, how many acres in total, 94, didn't you say, Hammock Park?
I believe it's between 94 and 95 acres, I believe, in total.
So, I mean, that's, that's really amazing, and Weaver, I mean, and our Edgewater Park, I mean, that a city of this size has had for so many years, you know, the forethought to be able to preserve these large tracts of land.
I think we have 33% green space.
I mean, my hat's off to all the people that have gone before, Honey Moon Island, Calamity Sea.
Slightly more, more than anybody else.
Yeah.
I would say.
It's a very proud and longstanding history.
Yep. Any, any, anything else to talk?
Good thing.
I'll just say this, and you don't have to answer this question, it's really, again, kind of a housekeeping thing.
Isn't this a comment time, where we've already passed?
It's not a question, I'm just saying something, and I'd like somebody to look into it later.
Just kidding.
The, the, you know, one of the things that I always experienced playing Little League next to Hammock, is there's all kinds of addresses for Hammock, and on those streets that touch Hammock, so when you have to call 911, and it just got me to thinking that when you're in Hammock, if you're on this side, if you're by San Mateo, it's one thing, and if you're by Douglas, it's another thing, so, it would be nice if, if that was organized in some way for 911 purposes, if people need something, because you just gave me three addresses for part of Hammock, and I, that's what got me to thinking, so, I don't know how you do any of that, but I do think we should consider it, because we have a lot of hikers, dog walkers, kids in camps, you know, that kind of thing, it'd just be nice, especially if 911 is looking at GPS, you know what I'm saying, so, I just throw that out there. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Bajowski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously, there will be a second reading once we get this back from the county. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Okay, now we have the first reading of ordinance 21-18, repealing Chapter 82, vehicles for hire in its entirety, and creating Chapter 82 transport service vehicles and micromobility devices. Staff recommends this ordinance be continued until May 19th, so can I have a motion to continue this?
Still moved, second.
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Kynes and Commissioner Torga?
Getting in that fight.
Yeah, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion approved unanimously, and then we have our agenda.
Move approval.
No, just kidding. Well, with that addition.
With the change, because it currently says second reading, ma'am.
Yep.
And we just would change it to first reading, so I'll have to readjust the order, but that's.
Right.
Where you're at.[1710.33]